Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education interim meeting to order. It is 4:04 PM. I apologize for the slightly late start. I do want to announce that there will be no call to the audience during this interim board meeting, as is the case for all interim board meetings. And our attendance today is strictly limited to no more than ten people, which is the recommendation currently by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The general public does have the option to review, to view remotely via live streaming on Roku, Apple TV, and online at nhcsTV.wordpress.net. And we hope you all are home and staying healthy. I would like to now ask for an approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. I would now like to ask for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, 11A36, and 115C-402 to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including pending litigation in the case captioned Murray v. Bullard and New Hanover County Board of Education. Do I need to read the case number? Okay. Case number 20 CB 783 filed in New Hanover County District Court, A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance of public officer or employee, and 115C-402 official record of a student that is not a public record.
Move for closed session.
Sir.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. All right, we are back in open session. Thank you to everyone who has waited patiently for us to come back online. I would like to move on to item number three, personnel. Dr. Burns?
Madam Chair, members of the board, there is one item on the personnel report this evening. Wayne Bullard, General Counsel for the Board of Education, has submitted his resignation effective today. I ask that you move to accept this report as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved. Item number four, interim legal representation. We have a proposal, and I would like to bring forth a proposal that we contract with the law firm of Tharrington Smith. And we have Deborah Stagner here with that law firm to answer any questions. So if there is, I would like to ask for a motion to approve that interim contract for legal services with Tharrington Smith.
Move to approve the contract.
Second. Is there any discussion? This would be the time to ask Ms. Stagner any questions that she might have, and we appreciate you being here with us this afternoon.
Are we going to be primarily working with you?
Yes, it's my anticipation that I would be the primary attorney working with you and the primary point of contact. We do have seventeen attorneys in our firm that solely do representation of school boards. And so for specialized work, then I would call on some of my colleagues. For example, Rod Malone is one of my partners who's worked with this board on construction issues and bond forfeiture issues, and I would anticipate he would be the main person working with bond forfeiture matters and any kind of construction, real estate, school buildings and things like that, because he has that area of expertise. But primarily, I would be the person you'd be seeing on a regular basis.
Because there is, I guess, a local branch here, but they are not, they don't specialize in education the way you're, you and your colleagues do that you just brought up. So that's why I was concerned that you are the ones that...
Right. So I've been representing school boards since 2000 with Tharrington Smith. I have two school boards that I represent on a regular basis, and I do a lot of litigation representing and defending school boards, work on personnel matters, contract matters, student issues. So we do have the breadth of expertise that can help you with what might arise. But I know that it's helpful to have one person and one face to see on a regular basis, and that would be me, so.
Okay.
Ms. Stagner, thank you very much for coming down here. Just really briefly, could you talk about your work with New Hanover County for the people at home? Just your past experiences with our board and some of the things you've done for us?
Well, I have been assigned to work with your board on some litigation matters, defending the boards on some lawsuits. I actually, a very long time ago, had worked with the New Hanover County Board of Education. So I'm, you know, and I do have a lot of experience sitting with boards, school boards, advising them during, during meetings, working on open, open meetings laws, public record issues. I've presented on those issues to school board members in the past, handled personnel matters for various school boards, doing investigations, also student matters, investigations, student hearings, things like that.
Thank you. Can I ask you, what are the other two school boards that you primarily are working with? You said you represent two.
Right. So I am General Counsel for the Edgemont County Board of Education and the Roanoke Rapids City Schools Board of Education. So those are two boards that I regularly go to their meetings and advise them on, on matters. And then I represent school boards. I've got active litigation matters that I'm defending, school boards all the way from out in the far western part of the state to, you know, to the eastern part of the state to you all. So I've, I've made appearance and responded on behalf of the board in the John Doe case. So I'm currently working with you on that.
Are there any other questions? All right, hearing none. There was a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, Ms. Stagner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to item number five, the superintendent search process. We did speak about this during our last board meeting, and we were provided some written information about some other, some search organizations and what some other legal councils, some information that they had shared about search processes across the state. And based on that information, I would like to bring forth a motion to approve the hiring of the NCSBA to help us search for our next superintendent. So is there a motion to approve the NCSBA?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. I would like to welcome the NCSBA here, and Allison Schaper, representing the NCSBA. And thank you for helping us get started in this important process in the midst of a very uncertain time, I think, in the, not just in the state, but across the globe. But I appreciate you being here. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Glad to be here, even under these interesting circumstances. But these are interesting times we're living in. I have prepared folders for you, if I may approach and hand those out. So, thank you so much for the confidence you have shown us in voting to hire us. We promise to do our very best to get you great candidates, have a great process, and get good information about those candidates. So we are thrilled to be helping you. I wanted today to, and again, thank you very much, to, A, explain a little bit about the process and what to expect, and talk to you a little bit about our approach and how long it takes and things like that. And then I also want, need some approval of documents in order to get the search process started. We did provide you with the documents, we call our initial documents, by email on Friday, so you would have a chance to look at those. Let me first say that anything, that our job is to prepare drafts to help you stay on track, to, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But if there's anything you want to change, we're here to make sure that you get things changed the way you want to. So first, I'm going to do just a short part of this PowerPoint to just talk to you about the process. I would, as you open your folders, if you look to the right, you will see a series of documents. If you pull the second one, which is a timeline that has colors on it, blue and yellow, that'll actually help you follow the process I'm talking about. Also, on the left-hand side is information that we had sent you earlier about the process generally, and a copy of this PowerPoint, so if you want to look at that as well. So let me just talk a little bit about our search process. Generally, it takes about six months to do a search. That's from when the person, when you start your advertising, which if you approve what we need to approve today, we can start tomorrow. And that's when the person shows up. So you, we actually, about five months, because a month of that time is, is most people have to give about a month's notice before they can leave their current position. So it, that six months includes that month. Okay? So this timeline here, as I said, goes along with these steps. The first thing you need to do is approve the initial documents, which hopefully we can do today, and the advertising will begin tomorrow. During the six or eight period, six to eight week period, when you advertise, that's what we recommend, we, there are things that you need to do in the meantime. As I said, we draft all the documents, and we're going to have you approve those today. So we provide a sample application form, a draft, a vacancy announcement, and then we also do, in that time, nationwide recruiting and advertising, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So we, normally, we recommend six to eight weeks. Eight weeks is preferable. We do have on your sample timeline here an application deadline of May 11. That's about eight weeks, and we think that's a good amount of time. Our experience is that more than eight weeks, you don't really get any more applications. Less than eight weeks, you start to see less applications. So that's about what we think is reasonable. During the time, during the time that you're advertising, it's kind of a quiet time for the board. You won't hear a lot. We do ask that if you get calls about, from candidates or about candidates, that you refer all of those to us. A part of this process is keeping the board comfortable that everybody's getting the same information at the same time. And so rather than candidates lobbying specific board members or references coming directly to a specific board members, that creates distrust among the board. And so what we really try to do is make sure everybody gets the same information by having it all come through us, and we'll present everything to the board. So hopefully, that is a comfortable process for you, and it does help also from you for being inundated and individually lobbied. The idea is to keep it as fair for the candidates as possible, too, so that they all get an even shake. We do do national recruiting and advertising, and I'll talk a little bit about that when we go over the documents. I actually am speaking to a group of aspiring urban superintendents this weekend. We were supposed to go to Alexandria, Virginia and do it, but that's not happening. We're all going to do that remotely. But I've spoken to that group earlier this year. I've spoken to the cohort from last year. We've gotten some great candidates from that resource. I went to the American Association of School Administrators meeting in February and recruit, you know, we recruit a lot of candidates from that, too. So we do have a national recruiting effort. We find that about half of our applicants come from out of state every time we do these searches, and about half in-state. That's pretty consistent. We also speak to the, I speak to the, to the State Association of Aspiring Superintendents and have a good relationship with, with that organization. We do about seventy to eighty percent of the searches in the state every year, and so I know most of the superintendents in the state, and most of them I have helped get their current positions, or a large percentage of them anyway. So we feel like we blanket the state, we blanket the country, and we're going to talk about how to do that in a little bit more detail later. So we do a lot of recruiting. I do have people, if I, if they call me up and ask me, you know, should I apply for that position? I'll encourage most people to apply, but occasionally, I'll call someone in particular if I don't, if I think they would be a good fit, make sure that they are, or know that I think they would be a good fit. But I never tell you that, because that would influence you, and I don't want to do that. So our job is not to make decisions for you. You guys are by law the decision makers. So we don't screen, we don't tell you who to hire, we don't recommend people. What our job is to do is get you as many great candidates as we can, get you great information about those candidates, and then get you, have you a good and fair and neutral process. Okay? So by law, in North Carolina, you, the board is the sole decision maker about who is selected as a superintendent. Okay, so that's the first six to eight weeks. Also during that time, we'll be collecting application materials. Again, the board won't be hearing a lot about that, because they all, that all needs to come to us. And then we also are very careful to preserve candidate confidentiality. That's another thing about North Carolina. We have laws that prohibit you from releasing the names or information about employees generally or applicants for employment, and that would include superintendent applicants. So it is a criminal misdemeanor to release information about candidates, about, written information about candidates. So these applications need to remain very confidential. Many of the candidates that you get will want to know that their application will not be all over the place and the fact that they're a candidate, especially sitting superintendents. They do not want their current boards to know, and especially their current communities to know, if they're looking for another position, because if they don't get it, it's very difficult for them to continue in their current position. So that actually works in North Carolina as a benefit, because we see a lot of people who will not apply elsewhere, because it may be a more public process by state law. And so that actually turns out to be a benefit for us, in terms of the number and the quality of the applicants. So we also, what we do in, in the time after the applications come in is we post to a secure website, and we'll, and we do all, everything electronically. So we will be giving you information about that as well. Also during this time, we have public forums, I think I skipped this one, staff and community surveys that we're going to ask you to approve today. We think that's very important, to get input from your staff. And we have separate surveys for staff and community, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, too. There, you can also have public forums, although honestly, with everything going on, that's going to be tricky. I mean, we may be able to have some electronic forums or something, but having a lot of people in a room is an issue right now. But, and then we also encourage organizational statements. If the PTA wants to submit an organizational statement, or the Chamber of Commerce, you know, our organization, our board of directors got together, and we decided this is what we're looking for, that's also welcome. So what we do is we pull all that information together and come back and present that to the board before you see the applications, so that you can develop a profile before you see the applications, based on what your community and your staff are interested in and informed by that, but obviously also your, your opinions about what you're looking for. So that's, that's the first part of the process. So after this meeting, the next time we will come back before you, is to report on the surveys and other community information that we have received, and let, and allow you all to develop a profile. Okay. Once we receive the applications, then we end up collecting them. It takes us a little while to prepare them. We pull, we pull internet information about all the candidates, and when a candidate submits an application, what they submit to you is what they, what they want you to hear. But if you look in, on the, online, you'll see other information about what issues are going on in the community, and we try to pull that for you, so all board members have the same thing. So somebody could have lawsuits against them, or else they could have one superintendent of the year, but that's the kind of stuff we would pull out of the, out of the newspapers and off the internet. We do not pull blogs, we do not, we do not pull opinions about people, because those are, those are not a general item of what's going on. Every, every sitting superintendent is going to have people who are mad at them, because they have not, they have made a decision that, that someone may not like. And so we don't pull that kind of stuff, but we'll pull general articles about lawsuits or superintendent of the year and that kind of stuff. Okay? We also provide you recent test scores and district test scores from where they are, and we also give you a experience chart that tells you basically how many years of experience they have. So these are tools that allow you to review all of the information. We give you every document we receive, so you have to understand it's going to be a lot of information, which is helpful, and, but we also give you tools to allow you to process that, so. The next couple of weeks is you review the applications once you receive them, you decide who you want to interview. We normally recommend that you interview between seven and ten candidates. More than ten, you feel overwhelmed; less than seven, you may not feel you have a choice. But again, that's up to the board. We facilitate the conversation. We'll be in the meeting, we'll be in closed session meetings once you start to look at applications and facilitate it, but we don't recommend candidates. But you will have had a chance to look at that. And we do recommend you all review the applications separately and come back with your list of who you're interested in talking to, of who you're interested in talking to. And that way, and we'll go around and get everyone's opinions, and that'll be a starting point for the conversation.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Based on your experience, typically, how many applications should we anticipate?
We just closed Carteret with twenty and Johnston with thirty-one.
Okay.
So that should give you a ballpark. Johnston's a little bigger system, so, you know, that's, that's about what we will see. I will tell you that I have been receiving phone calls about, from people who are interested in your position, and I think you will have a strong pool. You are a desirable place to live, a good school system, and also a, a larger school system. And so you're going to probably get a number of superintendents looking to move up from those positions where they are in smaller districts, and also from out of state. As I said, I did some national recruiting also recently, and you have several people that are already interested in your position or have called me.
Just to follow on to that, with all the uncertainty with the May 11th application deadline, if, if we don't have, let's say we have fifteen applicants, or, you know, a limited number of applicants on May 11th, would it be possible to accelerate the bottom half of this timeline and push that down two or three weeks?
Yeah, it would be possible to do that even without that scenario that you talk about, because really, there's time built into this. If you'll see, there are ranges of dates, and we can have the meetings, if you want to accelerate the timeline, we can have the meetings sooner in that timeline versus later, and we can move it up. We can probably squeeze a couple of weeks out of this timeline if you want to, if you want to accelerate it. I think you're looking at the start of school.
Yeah, I, I think that September 8th date is really important to hit, but I'm just nervous about the next three or four weeks, how many people are going to be looking to move jobs, change positions, with all this uncertainty.
I will think, I do think that this is actually, will be a beneficial time, in the, in the sense that you will have people at home who will have time to get on their computers and be thinking about their next steps. So I don't think that's going to actually detract too much from the, from the numbers. It is an uncertain time, but people are staying home, and they're not going to the movie theater, and they're not going out to dinner, and they're not doing all those things they might normally spend their free time doing, so.
Can I, can I ask you a question about?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a very uncertain time.
Yes, sir.
And the fact that you brought up that, yeah, people do have more time on their computers, but outside of that situation, that it is a very uncertain time, do you often have, or does this happen very often, where you have superintendent searches, this close to an, an election, where literally, we're going to have three new board members in a matter of months? And, and you know as well as everybody up here does, that it's going to have a lot to do with the superintendent we're going to have, has to do with people already on the board, but yet, we're going to have three new people, and a lot of it's a voice of the community, that it might be different, a lot different. So what is your take on doing this kind of search, this close to an election? Do you think it's a healthy idea to bring about a leadership from one board and then basically almost switch a whole board over and have a, have a, this new superintendent work with a different group, and so close to just starting a term? Or if they're going to actually reflect what the public possibly is interested in?
Well, it, it's very common, because when superintendents leave, they leave, and the board needs to fill those positions. So it is common to have of, of boards filling the positions before, around, and during, you know, crossing an election. So we deal with that all the time. The board that you have here has been on the board a little while, so that, you know, you may have new members come who, if their first task was to hire a superintendent, you know, they may not be as familiar with the needs of the school district. So there's, there's that, and then, of course, you have the new constituency. What I would say is that requesting the information, excuse me, I'm just trying to keep myself from coughing, because I don't want to cough.
That's okay, I'm the same way.
It just scares everybody when you do that these days. I would say that one of the reasons to do the surveys and the other public input is to be informed about, is to, is to gather the information about what the community and staff want, and to take that into account when you're, when you're choosing. So normally, boards go ahead and do, do this when they have time. I have done it where it's been very awkward, because you've been, you know, you did the first interviews when you had the old board, and the second interview is when you had the new board, and it is good to have the same board through the whole process. So it's not uncommon to move forward under these circumstances. Okay? Where were we? So, so you, I think you'll get a good number of candidates, I think that's where we were, and we'll get you all that information. You'll see all the information we get. We facilitate the selection process. Normally, it's about seven to ten candidates you interview. We'll schedule the interviews. I, we believe all the communication with candidates should come from us for the reasons that we talked about before. So, and we do all the coordination. So this takes a huge load off the board. All you have to worry about is making good decisions and getting good information and reviewing the information. We try to take all of the daily tasks off of you, so. So we also can assure that there is proper meeting notice and compliance. We'll provide you sample interview questions, based in part on your, your profile that you develop. And we do not sit in on the interviews when you have them. There's a reason for that. I don't want anyone to think that I have a vote, or that we have any say in who you hire. That is not our job, and I don't think any consultant should be doing that for you. You are smart people, you were elected to make these decisions. By law, you are required to be the ones that make these decisions, and so we do not weigh in on who. That is your job. But we do, again, try to get you good information. So we don't sit on the interviews. We do escort folks in and out of the interviews, and we will coordinate all the interviews, and we will make sure that you are not disturbed by folks who shouldn't be coming into the meeting. It is confidential from the time you receive the applications until the end of the process. Yes, sir.
Is possible to leave some applicants that have been asked to leave their district?
That have what?
That have been asked to leave?
Yes, we do not tell anyone they cannot apply. But we, that will be, that will be in the internet searches, which is why you look at that.
Okay.
Okay?
So we'll know that.
That, it, we will, if we are aware of it, we will get information that shows what had happened. That's very public, it's usually a public vote, so that's why we do the internet searches. I found a long time ago, that when, before we did it, every, some of the board members would get on, as soon as they got the names, they'd get on, on the internet and start looking for that stuff. So we want everybody to have it. It's the stuff that is publicly available, so that should be there. And if, if there's something, so, so between the first and second interviews, we do a very thorough background check. So normally, after the first interviews, you narrow it down to three or four, and usually, yeah, at least three, because two, if one drops out for some reason, you don't really have a choice left. So it's usually good to have at least three finalists. We'll do a very thorough background check. We'll also interview references. One of the things that we have to offer is, I'm recently the chair of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which is part of a group of thirty-six states that do this work through their school boards associations. I have contacts all across the country, and I have people who will be candid with me about if someone's been successful or not in other states, as well as in North Carolina, where I pretty much know, I know all the school board members. Every single school board in this estate is a member of our organization, as well as this, you know, I know the superintendents as well, so.
Okay.
We try to get you good information. That's what I mean about good information, so that you know who you're hiring. Okay? We also will take the minutes for you, and then... And then, um, again, we take references. I just talked about that. We also think it's critical to have a criminal and credit background check. And, um, we have a very good service that we use out of Durham. That is an additional, uh, cost, but it is so important to do that. We've, where we've found issues has been in academic credentials puffing or, you know, or not being honest about academic credentials. So you really want to check that kind of stuff. We try to be very, very thorough about that. And then we get other information about the finalists, their salary, their evaluations. Even if people give good references because they might want that person to leave, if we get their evaluations, we find out that maybe they didn't think that highly of that person before they left, so that goes to your issue. So, um, so we do all the scheduling, the interviews. We make sure that you comply with federal, uh, credit reporting laws and facilitate the discussion of references, et cetera. And then we also, um, send final regrets, do a press release and, um, help you with sample contracts. So that's kind of what the, I just wanted to go through that to kind of give you an idea of what we do. The rest of this, um, is, you know, again, we, we provide sample press releases and all that, but, um, we don't need to go Y and CSBA because you guys already chose to use us, so. We are very experienced. I've been doing this for 22 years as this, at the School Boards Association. I've done about 175 searches. Every time I learn something new, so you have the benefit of my mistakes or my, uh, my trials in all of those other 175. We think we have a very professional process. I think the boards that have used us have been very satisfied with our services. We're here to serve you. We have very much of a servant, le, you know, servant helper, um, approach to this. We, we want to make you happy. If you don't find who you're looking for, we don't want you to settle. It's too important of a position. If, if you don't find who you're looking for, we'll have a serious conversation about what you didn't find and we'll go find you some more candidates. And we can talk about that at the time. But remember, all you need is one super good one. It'd be nice to have four or five and then you have a hard decision, but, um, you need somebody who really you feel strongly is going to be a good leader. And we believe, based on the pool and the folks I've been talking to, that you will find some really good folks in that. So I'm really confident about that. Okay? So let's get to the documents we need to approve. Are you guys okay? If you have any questions about the process? I just felt like it was important for us to kind of go through what to expect.
Just one additional question. Um, you mentioned for the internet searches, um, you're looking for articles and whatnot. Does that include social media?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
To the extent we can get access to it. That's my hesitation, it's like, if they, if it's a closed page, we can, you know, we probably won't get access to it, but. Okay, so we need a few things from you, um, about, and the letter on the right kind of explains that. See, this is what I don't want to do. First thing we'll need to do is get approval, and I will need some votes on these, is get approval for the, the, um, on the timeline. All we need is approval of the application deadline, which we have is May 11. The rest of that is just in, in informational. As you asked about squeezing the timeline, this can be changed, the rest of them can be changed. But the thing we need to do is advertise the application deadline. So I would need approval of the May 11 deadline, which is our best recommendation.
Move to approve that deadline.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second for May 11th deadline for the application. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It is approved.
The second document is the advertisement. This is just to tell people what your school system is about. We sent it ahead of time. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. The first paragraph is just when applications are due. That's not controversial. The, the second paragraph is about the school system. And I would ask you if you, um, as you looked at this over the weekend or yesterday, if there's anything that's inaccurate there or, um, that you would like to say about your school system that we did not say. Normally we pull that paragraph from the school system's website, um, and then the, the next one about the community, we pull from the Chamber of Commerce website. So, um, is there anything in the first, in that paragraph number two, serving over 26,000 diverse students, that you think needs to be changed?
To be completely accurate. Pardon? Where is Mary Hazel?
She's in the room.
In the other room. Yeah, I, I mean, do we want to be completely accurate with the, with the, um, well, actually, Dr. Burns may be able to answer this. Do we want to be completely?
So you want, is your PR person, you want her to look at this?
I just want to be completely accurate with the, the number of students.
We can get, we can get that with her. Just, you can approve this with a proviso that we check that out.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Ms. Gibson is here. I will take this back to her so she can be reviewing.
Okay. Okay, that's the only thing that I, I would say is just make sure that the numbers are accurate. Other than that, I don't have any other concerns.
And we'll go through it with, if, uh, who, who's the person that I should contact? Who's your PR person?
Ann Gibson.
Okay.
I will, uh, we will go through this with her and make sure that, um, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else in there that you're, are you okay with this?
I'm fine.
Good with it?
Okay. Uh, the second paragraph is about your community. Uh, again, we pulled that from the Chamber of Commerce website. Is there anything else in, um, in that, anything in that paragraph that you would like to change or add to? We also provided some links to different, um, different websites that would give more information about the community. And by the way, I cough when I talk too much and that happens. It's been happening for years, so. This is not the coronavirus. Anybody, everybody all right with that?
I think it's good.
And again, I think it came from yours Chamber of Commerce website. The last, uh, the next paragraph is just kind of what superintendents are supposed to do. It's kind of standard stuff. It lists everything in the kitchen sink about what superintendents are supposed to do. So one, one we always leave off, but should probably put on there is walks on water at the end, but, um, everybody wants that.
I know that we've talked about innovative. That word's come up more than once and that's not in here. And I understand that this is the common.
That's fine.
And I just, I, I think that that's an important word that we're looking.
Innovative? Okay. By the way, Jim is listening on the.
Oh, great.
Internet, on your, on your stream. And, um, I would have brought him with me, but we decided, I decided it was better to just have one person come, just in the interest of all this stuff. He's got little kids and I wanted to make sure he was.
I mean, if anyone disagrees, that's just something I know that, that's been important to me.
No, it's a good word. It applies to the future and we are in the future now.
So where would you put that? Under which number? Innovative decision-making?
In that, maybe in that level.
I could say innovative and visionary educational leadership.
Yeah, either one. It could fit.
Okay.
Under number one?
Yeah, I think one would be more appropriate.
Okay.
Right.
Number one?
Okay.
Okay, got it. Anything else? And just to follow up what I just said, Jim will be the person that will be your point person for a lot of this stuff, so you can expect to hear from him. You met, you met him when you interviewed Dr. Burns. And he's one of my most experienced folks, so he's great. They're all great, but he's, okay. Got a lot of experience. Okay. Uh, the last paragraph is just who to call when you want to apply, so. With that, with those changes and the proviso that we checked with Ms. Gibson, um, uh, can I get an approval of that?
Is there a motion to approve, uh, the application as, or the advertisement as, as amended? As appropriate?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This, the la, the next document is advertising options.
I'm sorry, we gotta say, all those in favor say aye.
We have a discussion, not that we didn't already.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Sorry, I ahead of myself there. Trying to get through so you don't have to stay much longer. The next document is advertising options. The first page is stuff we recommend. There's only one paid advertisement on there, um, and that is the 60 days for the American Association of School Administrators. As I said, that, that is pretty much everybody who's in, or most people who are school administrators. And so that will reach pretty much everyone. We find that that gets dispersed pretty widely and you don't need to do a lot of other paid costs. Back when I was in private practice and doing these, that would be one local newspaper ad. That's $799. I mean, it really is very inexpensive to advertise. All of this is free on the, on the web. On the next page, you'll see some other additional advertising options that folks have sometimes asked for. Those are optional, but we do recommend the first page. The second page is if you want to add any of these week, any of these other things. There is an additional cost for those things.
In your opinion, is that necessary? Would you recommend the second page?
Not unless you want to target a specific group of people. I mean, that's what those are. For example, we, Association of School Personnel Administrators, they'll get it, I think, in the, in the Association of School Administrators. They also belong to that organization. It's kind of a subset. So, that's why we suggest these upfront and the other ones are optional if you have some specific need, want, desire to target a specific group of people.
So is everyone, is there a motion to advertise for 60 days in the American Association of School Administrators?
So moved.
Is there any other, so move, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any additions to that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Okay. The next document is the application form. This is very standard. There's a lot of where have you worked, where did you go to school, that kind of stuff. There are only two pages I really need you all to decide, make some decisions about. And that would be pages nine and 10. Remember what the application is. It's a screening document and the idea is that you're, you want an information that's important to you to screen people in or out of an interview. It's not your final opportunity to hear from folks, but it is a screening tool. So, um, the short answer questions on page nine, there are 10 of them. That's too many, so we recommend that you choose four to six. If you don't like these and you want to add something different, that's fine. We just, we just, this is a, this is a menu, not a final decision. So are there any things that you specifically would like to know about as you screen candidates?
Well, you're saying we should pick four or five?
Or six, yeah, four just.
Or six, if you'd like at this time.
So does anyone have any strong feelings about any of that?
Financial planning, budgeting.
Number two?
Yeah. Yes, sorry.
Number six.
I agree with number six.
Number six is fostering community relations and intergovernmental partnerships.
Yep.
And number eight?
Number eight is success in working with diverse populations.
Number nine?
Number nine is planning and funding of school facilities.
Number three.
No, no, number nine is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Leadership and maintaining safe schools.
Name, number three.
Number three is personnel relations administration.
That's a good.
Number four?
And number four is goal setting and student, uh, monitoring student achievement. That's six. Are you good with those? Two, three, four, six, eight, nine.
Yeah.
Okay? We're going to do the same thing on the next page. Page 10, we suggest you pick two or three essays for them to write. And again, this is just a screening tool. So what are you interested in knowing about to help you screen someone in or, in or out?
Number two.
Number two is how the superintendent and board work together.
Wait, I'm still struggling on nine. Sorry. All right, I'll, I'll come back to that. What, sorry, what was number 10?
Page 10 is, is essays and just, we need three or four of those if, at the most. So number two has been suggested, how the board and superintendent work together to complement and support each other.
I like five and six, but.
Five and six, what are the first things you would do to learn about our community? And please describe your leadership style.
Yeah, I'd definitely like, I'd definitely like six.
I like three.
Three is, what would you do to raise student achievement and close?
Yeah, three's good.
Achievement gaps.
You want to do two, three, and six?
Two, three, five, and six is what, um, three, I said three or four, so four is fine if you're okay with that.
So which ones were those?
Two, three, five, and six.
I mean, I would prefer six over five.
Pardon?
I would take six over five if we had to choose between those two.
Okay.
No, I, I, but you said four would be fine?
Three or four, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Four's good.
I mean, four, I think we can find through the application process.
Picking four is good.
So I think if we could, if we did, if we did those four, that would be fine.
Yeah.
I'd rather have more information.
Two, three, five, and six. Remember, you'll get a chance to ask questions in the interview process. This is just screening or in or out. Okay, with those selections, um, can, and we have an approval of the application, the selections made by the board? So moved.
Did you want to discuss nine and go back and discuss number nine?
Well, I mean, I, I was still looking at those when we, all of a sudden we, we, we went to the 10. So what, what were the ones that we selected for nine again?
Page nine, two, three, four, six, eight, and nine.
I guess I'm, I'm struggling a little bit between nine and, and, and five.
Can we combine them for you?
I think that would be great because to me, knowing that, that, and to me, team building is not just senior staff team building, which is definitely important, but it's team building overall, team be, being the entire system. And that, to me, is extremely important. Um, and I, and I want to talk over, I, I, I want to talk amongst the board on, on this.
I think maybe we should replace nine with five because I think as, you know, we've moved forward these last few weeks, we've realized how important organization structure is.
Yes.
I have.
And that, to me, is leadership.
So instead of nine, uh, we would have five.
Well, considering everything we've gone through, I think nine is imperative.
Well, we can have more than six. It's not a rule. It's just a suggestion. Well, we can have more than six, it's not a rule, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think, I think showing, you're showing leadership by doing your organizational planning and team building and that in turn leads to that safe school environment that you're, you're hoping to, to get to. So, I guess my argument would be if you're doing the planning and you're doing the team building, you're going to get that safe school environment.
Not necessarily.
Well, we're going to ask them these questions when we interview them.
Right. But if you're not planning, if you're not organizing, you're not going to be safe. So it's, leadership to me is important, leadership with this planning and team building is important.
And these are also short answer. I want to see in a short answer how you're going to do organizational management. The leadership in maintaining safe school environments is probably a bit longer and deeper than two or three sentences. I can get something from somebody in two or three sentences.
Well, she said you could do six, you don't have to do five. I'd really like to hear, I mean, seriously, after everything we've been through, that is something I'd really like to.
And I would suggest it's fine to be inclusive at this stage of the process.
Okay.
I, I would say that if you want to add that number nine as well, that will, two, three, four, that'll be seven, that's fine, that just means another couple paragraphs for them to write.
Okay.
So if it's important, then I think that's good.
Yeah, very important.
Okay, so with those, seven choices on that page and four choices on the following page.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the choices on pages nine and ten, the short answer and the essays?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved.
Okay, the next and final document we have for your approval are online surveys. We have two different sets for you. Both sets have a staff and a community, but the, the questions are the same. It's useful to look at what your staff concerns are versus the community concerns, they can be different. And so, the yellow ones are very simple answers, what are, what's most, what, whether things are most important, very important, less important, et cetera. Very simple, you'll get more people answering that one, but less nuanced information. The green ones are more drilling down into name our top five strengths, name our top five needs. So it's really a question of what the board prefers, we have some boards that prefer the yellow, we have some boards that prefer the green, we're happy to do either. It generally helps to have the same survey used for both groups so that you can compare the answers. As I said, you'll probably get more because it's a simpler survey to fill out with the yellow, but you'll get more drilled down, deep information from the green.
Well, one is, well, to me, as many people participating as possible, so the four, especially the community, well, actually, everybody. So to me, the, the yellow one, the simple one would get more input, even though it would get into detail from the people that do show it out. Probably easier to interpret, too.
See, I don't know, I always feel like you get more with quantity or quality over quantity.
And I think, I mean, personally, with a lot of the conversations that I've had at, at schools, I really think that our teachers and staff really want to be a part of this discussion.
Oh, absolutely.
And so I'm, I'm trying to think from their perspective, what would make, what would they want to, to respond to.
Keep in mind also that there is an open-ended space at the end of each of these surveys that allow people to say whatever they want to, in addition to what we specifically asked about. And that's sometimes where the most information comes out.
And you make this statement about quality over quantity, I think a lot of it has to do with time and the huge variety of people that we're talking about. Quality, you can get quality with the yellow ones from a different population.
Well, I just, I mean, that's why I made the point about the, there's, if they, if there's something's not asked about, there's a chance to say at the end in just writing it.
Do you have a, a kind of a, a sample amount of time that they, either would take?
I have not time to, but I, I, I think this is obviously, people are going to have to think about how they prioritize the inner group surveys. So as opposed to the yellow surveys, which is yes, this is important or no, not, that's not.
What about the return as far as, the, the, the green opposed to the yellow, the simple?
We get more responding to the yellow generally, is that what you mean?
Yeah, how, how many, I mean, is there a significant difference?
You know, we got a lot in Johnston County. More staff than the community, I think. I can't remember the numbers. For a smaller system, we usually see around two hundred or so, and it goes upward from there. We got into three to four to five hundred in Johnston County.
Was that with the yellow survey?
Pardon?
Was that with the yellow survey?
Um, honestly?
Would it, would it be possible to use, because in, in looking at these, I, I'm concerned about what I'll get back from a member of the community who's not really involved in education. It feels like the second survey would be better for teachers and school administrators.
We're doing that with another school system right now, so if you want to use it, it's just, it's just harder to compare, but.
Sure. But I mean, it's.
Yeah, the community's speaking from a different place.
Then, I, I feel like this would be, this green would be great for teachers and administrators, this would be good for the general public.
Okay, so you are interested maybe in the green for staff and the yellow for community?
Well, well, that sounds like a great idea. I, I'm really concerned about time. So many people have, have, have got such demands, you know, with their families, their work, and, and the, the opportunity, possibly the green one may not be filled out as much as the yellow one with staff. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think of how to get more involvement.
Although it seems as though we'll have more time than usual at home.
We are living in unusual times.
Which I, I think the green looks fine to me for the, for the staff as well, I like the green overall for both.
I'm, I'm good with that. I, I just wonder, like, experience and finance, budgets and acquiring outside funding, you know, questions that education-specific, how do people outside of the school system understand that question?
Well, I give them credit.
I'm not discounting their abilities. Demonstrate ability to integrate instructional and administrative technology, that's a question to me that is geared toward some sort of expertise.
You're talking about the green one, yeah, for, for, yeah.
Yeah, I do think the yellow is more community-friendly.
Yeah, maybe that would be a better way because the, the staff does, they're, they're going to have more input on the knowledge base, yeah. Do they split it, you said they do split it up, some of them?
We have, yeah, I mean, we'll do it either way, it just makes it harder to compare the responses, but that's fine. And some, a lot of people feel the same way, which is the teachers may.
Have more to say.
Want more in depth.
More opportu, or have had more opportunity to assess the school district and how it runs, so.
Is that?
Remember what this is, this is a survey that is designed for people who want to talk to the board, to, to tell the board something. It's anonymous but not confidential, so you need to understand that, too. We have to release anything that is, does not contain confidential personnel information, but it's anonymous who filled out a specific survey. So when the comments are, we'll print all that out for you, you'll see everything, please hire so and so, don't hire so and so, we like so and so. We have to redact that for you and we take care of that as part of our process. So we'll redact out, please hire blank, you know, we'll put, because that's not, can't be, be released under the personnel laws. But the board will see it all. So, you know, again, there's an opportunity for that, but just, so people don't think it's anonymous, I mean, don't think it's confidential. It is confidential, but it's also, I mean, it is anonymous but not confidential, okay? I want to make that clear. And it is for people who will have something they want to say. So, there are certain things, we, we redact when we, when it's allowed or appropriate legally to do so, but it's an opportunity to talk to the board. It's not a scientific survey, it's not, you know, it's just an opportunity for people to talk to.
When you're referring to staff, you're talking about everybody, that's a staff member. Anybody from the teacher's assistants, bus drivers, custodian, cafeteria workers, not just teachers, not just administrators.
No, it's anybody in the staff.
Counselors, nurses, anybody wants to.
Right. So am I hearing that there's a move to have the community do the yellow one and the staff do the green?
Is that?
That would be my motion.
That would be mine, yeah.
All right, so is that your official motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just, I'm curious, how is the data presented? You said that you see everything, is it going to be, are we going to see it in like bar charts or are you getting?
We do a, we do a report for you.
Okay.
And then we will come back and present it at a public meeting. That will be the next meeting we attend, and we'll present it and then we'll let you do your profile. So, again, you will see all of this comments and we will do a report that summarizes the results. But we will present to the public redacted comments that the newspapers can have and the public can have, so.
And how long do we keep this up on our website? So, how long do you have to keep this survey going? So, I'm assuming we put it on our website, on our social media?
What I will, what we will do is work with your PR person and, uh, to get it out, and then it, it'll be due, let me see. We'll have a due date of, of April twenty. See, on your proposed timeline, it says March eighteen to April twenty. And that would be the due date, and then we'll come back to your May five board meeting to present the information.
Okay.
Assuming we're allowed to come out of our houses, but.
Are there any recommendations as far as marketing that you've seen that has been more successful to get more people to complete in other districts?
We, we normally, we work with your PR people about the best places to do that, if you have any recommendations, I mean, we'll certainly be glad to hear those.
But I'm asking you, from your experience, where do you see the biggest, is it just the school website, is it from?
Well, we normally recommend that you put it up on your website, but that you, the newspapers are often happy to print an article about it. Sometimes you'll get TV coverage depending on how large your market is. We also, sometimes folks put it in the schools, you know, for, for parents to pick up. We don't recommend you send it home to the kids because you get children thinking it's funny and, you know. But, you know, we don't want to force anybody to do it, we don't want to say, here, to the kids, here, you have to get this filled out before you come back to school tomorrow. That's not, that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for people who, who want it. So sometimes we'll have this, uh, surveys at schools in a drop box at the schools and somebody from the school system can collect them and send them to us, either scan them or send them by mail. So we'll work to get it out as widely as possible. And as I said, the newspapers are usually really good about printing this availability out. We won't put the staff survey linked online because then it would be confusing and you'd get community members filling out the staff survey. So we will use your internal system to communicate with the staff. Okay?
Thank you.
Well, now, the staff is supposed to be, we're not, it's supposed to be anonymous?
It's, they, when they fill it out, it goes into the program, it's a, a Survey Monkey. We don't know who filled it out, we don't know where the computer is. We don't, unless they put their names in, very rarely somebody does that, but unless they want it, so they want to be known. But usually, we don't have any idea who filled it out.
And since it's anonymous, people can, somebody can potentially fill out both surveys, correct?
There's a, there's a provision, well, that's true, somebody could fill out both, but there is a provision that does not allow you to fill out the same survey from the same computer. More than once. Okay? So that's a, that's a feature of the survey. Okay. If there are, if there are, and we'll, we'll have, work with your PR person, Ms. Gibson, to, to push it out to community groups, too. But let me also say this to you, if you have community groups that want to make a statement like the PTA or the Chamber of Commerce as an example, county commissioners, they, they, if they want to meet in the, however, you know, in their leadership group and provide a statement about the things they're concerned about, we would encourage you to encourage your groups to do that, if they're interested in being a part of this process. We normally offer to do community forums, I just don't know what's going to happen, is that something you would be interested in if things loosen up?
I think we would be.
Would absolutely.
I would love it, if it has to do with the.
Would it be possible to work?
It's difficult to know.
When we're allowed to meet again.
What about like, you know, virtual?
Virtual town halls.
Town hall, we did, we did that with Star News.
You might have to do it that way, yeah.
On the timeline.
Or you would have like a call-in or, you know, maybe have, have some sort of ability to, to respond online or to have questions in online, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, the survey's already online, so, you know, that's one way of doing it, if people want to speak. My experience is that if you have a survey online available like this, that very few people show up to public forums. Now, I know your community is very engaged, so you may have people showing up.
Leading one.
But a lot of times you don't have as many, if people have this opportunity, a lot of folks feel more comfortable anonymously answering a survey than they do coming to a public meeting.
I'm, I'm curious, so you're doing this for Johnston County right now at the present, have they already gone through this part of the process or?
Yes.
Did they have a public forum?
They had people come to their, I mean, you always, you always have a board meeting where people can make public comment, and I think they used that opportunity, but they didn't get any much additional comment. They did get a lot of survey responses.
Yeah, I have some relatives that live over there.
Pardon?
I have some relatives that live over there.
Yeah.
So I know how, how.
They got a lot of survey responses and people took that opportunity, that's what I mean, a lot of times if people have the opportunity on the survey and it's anonymous, then they're more comfortable. But we can certainly, let, because of the circumstances, let me work with the superintendent and staff about some options, is that okay? With your, with Ms. Gibson maybe?
Work with the interim superintendent.
Yeah, sorry.
To be clear.
Is everyone comfortable with that? All right, yes, I think that would be great, thank you.
Okay, so did we get a motion to approve the surveys?
I think we did. Did we get a? Okay, so there's a motion, a second, there was discussion, correct? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved, thank you, Ms. Habbs.
Thank you again so much for your confidence in us, we will do everything we can to earn it. We earn your trust and we are here to serve you. So, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. And if you also get inquiries about the search, please send them to us so we don't have, you know, this feeling like there's deals going on in the background or whatever, that just doesn't help board cohesiveness, so we want to work on that through this process, so. Anything else?
Thank you, we, we've been through a whole bunch as a district and you've been there guiding us and helping us, and I just want to say again, thank you, I really appreciate you've just been so open and giving of your time.
Thank you, it's been my pleasure. I, I'm glad to see you have a fine interim superintendent. We hope we can get you a great permanent superintendent. So, we are, we're here to help you and support you and anything we can do to help, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and we're head, I'm going to head back to Raleigh unless you.
Drive safe.
Yes.
Be safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, and speaking of needing that one good leader at the right time, we will move on, and, and again, thank you again for your work on identifying the right interim superintendent at the right time.
That's what I do for.
Well, I don't know where we would be without having Dr. Burns at our side over these last couple of weeks, I do appreciate his hard work and the work of, of everybody who's not here, who can't be here, but who have, who have put in the time. But I do appreciate the fact that you knew what we needed and you certainly gave it to us, he's been, he's been wonderful.
I, I, I was confident he would be, but I'm glad he was willing to come, that's great.
Yes, yes, so.
All right, we'll see you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Speaking of which, moving on to item number six, the interim superintendent report.
Thank you.
Chair E Step, members of the board, I want to talk briefly, I could talk at length regarding the decisions and responses to COVID-19 that have impacted New Hanover County schools and have been made by New Hanover County schools in the recent days. The, the team of senior leaders and I have been meeting daily for a number of days to address the responses as they've unfolded across the nation and the state and in the community. On March fourteenth, Governor Cooper issued Executive Order Number 117, which effectively closed schools for students and with guidance from the State Board of Education and the state superintendent are treated as workdays. Prior to the guidance from the State Board of Education and the state superintendent, our team decided that the best course was to operate under optional workdays for all staff, full and part-time during the course of the, the executive order. And we worked diligently over the weekend to put together the plans necessary so that yesterday, we could transition from having students on Friday to no students on Monday and to give staff and the building level leaders as much information as we possibly could. This has been a challenge for many reasons, primarily due to the lack of certainty. There is little certainty at any level right now, and the decisions that are being made are based on the guidance from the CDC, Department of Health and Human Services, and New Hanover County Public Health. Prior to making decisions, I made contact and had conversations with the county manager, the chancellor of UNCW, the president of the community college, the CEO of the hospital, and a number of colleagues. So I felt comfortable in the decisions that we have made. It has been a, a struggle to provide timely information because things have happened so quickly. And again, we left Friday with students, Monday no students, and a completely different picture going forward. Yesterday, I, I believe that we had a day that helped us with the transition. We approached the staffing, as I have shared, as an optional workday. Across the state, I've gained information from ninety of the school systems through an, an email I received that indicates that about seventy-five of the districts are operating under an optional workday. There were a number or are a number that are operating under a mandatory or required workday, and there's some that are a little different from those. So the options here were optional workday, mandatory workday. And we believe that optional workday is the best course. During the two weeks that the order is in effect, all of the rules regarding leave and work are enforced. There's no waiver for that. And that has been very concerning and very difficult to help explain to folks because this is very different. The original guidance from the governor was, was good, the explanation from the state board made it easier to execute. So we, we have been communicating daily now. We had a principal meeting, five PM on Friday, to talk with them about what might happen. We had a virtual meeting yesterday and another one today with principals, we're, we're communicating with them so they can communicate with their school families. We'll continue to do that. The team of leaders that's working with me meets twice daily, once at nine, once at four, we'll continue to do that. Things are changing that quickly. With respect to building access, our buildings currently are open from eight until four, Monday through Friday. Parents needed to pick up medication, medical devices, personal effects, and so we have been flexible in working with that. With learning continuity, packets are available for students kindergarten through twelfth grade, and they'll be available after eleven o'clock tomorrow in schools and at the sites that we're serving meals. Hopefully, if everything goes as planned, next Wednesday, we will be able to deploy devices to high school students. It takes a little longer, we have to install filtering software so that we maintain the safety of the internet for our students' use and plan for the deployment, I think that will occur. During this time, the two-week timeframe at least, we are not focusing on new learning, we're focusing on supplemental learning during this time. Should there be a need to extend, we will make the decision regarding another phase, but right now, it is supplemental learning. I need to emphasize that this is to reinforce what has already occurred and to address the possibility of students having a backward slide with their knowledge and skills, which happens over holidays, the summer, and so that is the intent. We may or may not have teachers, at their discretion, providing additional information and support for their students as they're able to. The district is not a one-to- The district is not a one-to-one district, meaning not every student has a laptop. The district does not have a, a plan for students to take devices home, which is associated with one-to-one districts frequently. So we're having to train and scale up, and we'll do that to the best of our ability going forward. With respect to serving students and providing meals, starting yesterday at 11:30, lunch for yesterday and breakfast for today was provided at 14 sites. This morning, we learned that over 1,300 free meals were provided to students 18 and under, and I expect that to ramp up today. We're going to run the 14 sites for a while. We will continue to review that. We're likely to expand that. There are many community groups who are pitching in. Nurish NC, the food bank, and others are stepping up and doing what they have done, and they're doing more of it to support the families and the children who need food during this time, which I think is commendable. Another matter that we have addressed is remote work options for employees. That has been encouraged, as it should have been from the beginning with the governor's directive and the state board and state superintendent's guidance. This district does not have a policy nor a practice regarding remote work. And so the team that I work with has worked very hard and has developed remote work procedures that address eligibility and participation, approval, reporting during the time that you're working remote, remotely, the expectations, communication, and meetings. We have a process that has been shared with principals this afternoon. It is live on our employee portal now, and the document is being, documents are being shared. There are three. There's guidance, there, well, thank you. Remote work procedures, remote work requests, and remote work activity log are live now for employees. Principals are prepared to deploy this tomorrow. Employees may request remote work, but I need to spend a few moments talking about eligibility and participation. What we have put forth has to be subject to change, and we indicate that because the conditions are changing so rapidly, we may have to make an adjustment. And so we don't want folks to think that this is something that is absolute for the next two weeks. I wish we could say that, that is the plan, unless conditions change. The supervisor of the employee will review the request, and we have the document, I won't go through that, but they will review the request and approve. We've, we've encouraged supervisors to use maximum flexibility in determining whether or not employees can effectively perform their job responsibilities, considering whether the work can be completed remotely and based solely on their job responsibilities. In some cases, it is not possible to work remotely. Bus drivers, as an example, cannot work remotely. Custodians, and I will not go through all the categories, but there is very little way that they could do this. And I share this because during this time, because these are workdays, and we treat them as we would a snow day, for example, employees have a few options. They can report to work, they can take appropriate leave, they can take leave without pay, and they can apply to work remotely, and have approved work remotely. For some categories of employees, bus drivers, child nutrition services especially, they can't drive buses, they may be, they may be unable to prepare meals. They will have an opportunity to report to a site, and they will work at the direction of the principal. Our job descriptions allow for assignments to be made to just about every classified employee at the discretion of the principal. And so those employees, even though they can't drive a bus, can report to a site so they can get paid. So we're making as many accommodations as we can so that everyone has options to the best of our ability. This is voluntary. If you choose to work remotely at this time, there may be some change in the future. But I'm very confident that the procedures that we have put in place, they have the potential to serve the district well and long. I'm sure there's some things we're going to have to change. I won't say this has been done hurriedly because it has not. There's been great care and diligence gathering information from other districts, trying to pull together the best that we can within the context of New Hanover County schools. There is not a policy to support this. And my recommendation is, in the absence of policy, of course, the superintendent has the authority to act and to inform the board of the matter, which I'm doing now, and at some point, we will need to address a policy. And this can serve you well in the future for inclement weather days, potentially for any disasters that occur related to storms. So this is the start, and the care has been taken to develop something that I believe will serve you well going forward. We did not do it so that it was just enough. We've done it with the idea that this needs to stand going forward. We also are qualifying this, that this set of remote work procedures and remote work itself is limited only to this circumstance because it may be that the board, through discussion, chooses to do something completely different. So not setting the expectation that six months from now, something should occur, oh, we did this, we need to go back to that. This is for this circumstance. So we have put some qualifiers on there. I'm pleased that we've been able to do this on Tuesday, deploy it on Wednesday. I think that's remarkable, given the time. The staff has done a fine job with this. The principal meeting that was held virtually today was well over an hour. Great questions from the principals. I believe that they understand the spirit and the intent of this, and we'll do our best going forward. There's a lot more I could share, but given the hour and the need to get to the budget workshop, I'll stop. If it's okay, Madam Chair, if folks have questions on the board, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Dr. Burns, I just have one question. Some bus drivers and some custodial staff, you know, food service staff are immune compromised. Is there anything that we can do for those employees who just should not be coming to work?
Employees who should not be coming to work because they have a health concern, if they have documentation from their healthcare provider, obviously, we can deal with that. If they don't and still have concerns, we will deal with this on a case-by-case basis. One of the, the things shared with principals today was that Anthony Manzo, the interim HR director, is available to help them and guide them in matters like the ones you've described. So we will address it on a case-by-case basis. The, the fact that we have to follow the existing rules for leave make it a bit of a challenge, but we are going to make ourselves available and do what we can.
Thank you. As far as, you said, there's a lot of community assistance as far as getting the meals out from the cafeterias of the sign schools. Have we, since we do have these bus drivers and these buses and situations, have we thought about possibly going into the communities and delivering the meals? Is that part of the discussion or plans?
Yes, it has, yes, that's a great question. We have discussed that. Given the fact that the executive order is for two weeks, the 14 sites at the moment are working fairly well. We do think we will expand them. Depending on the conditions, it is possible that we will have buses delivering meals with bus drivers and CNS employees driving around through neighborhoods. We have a fairly good idea of where we might be able to serve the most children, and so we would address that to make it as easy as possible.
Thank you.
At this time, we're focusing on the 14 sites, and we're waiting to see how things develop.
Okay.
Any other question?
Not a question, just, I know we're in uncharted territory, and just thank you for all the work that you and senior staff have been putting in. I know that there's been a lot of questions, but I know that you are working diligently to try and answer them and within policy and within a very uncertain time. So thank you for all the hard work.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and on behalf of the senior staff, I want to tell you that they appreciate the patience and the calmness that's been demonstrated. This is, this is hard. It's hard for leaders, it's hard for everyone else. We all want answers, we all want decisions, and I shared with the principals yesterday that unfortunately, in a case like this, it seems we can never provide enough information in as timely a manner as folks would desire. However, being thorough right now matters. We're reacting as quickly as we can, but we're working to be very thorough as well, and they understand, and they're doing their best to support their school families. It is a very challenging time, and thank you. I know that all of the board feels the same way about the staff. They really are, they're very talented. You're very fortunate to have senior leaders and building-level leaders, as you do, in my opinion. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Any other questions? All right. All right, we will move on to our budget work session, item number seven. Mary Hazel Small, you're up.
Could we take a short break first?
Okay.
Quick recess.
Pause. We will take a five-minute recess, I'm so sorry.